I believe it's 5:30, so we may as well get started. Welcome to the City Commission Work Session for 9 March 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two items to discuss on the agenda tonight. You know, Crossroads Manhattan, a strategic plan, and Aggieville with a couple of things to include parking management. So I assume we'll begin with the strategic plan. Our consultants, I guess, will take the lead on that?
Yeah, I'll just kick, we'll kick it off a little bit with some information. I'm gonna stand over here since I'm running the cameras and everything. We're working on the back projector right now, but you should have slides in front of you that Planning Next is gonna share here soon. And you should be able to hear them all fine. And just wanted to give you all a little overview of what we are or have been doing over the past couple of weeks. We're really kicking off the public engagement process with our first round of virtual meetings here in the week of March 22nd. We've launched our project website in the last couple of weeks. We have had a little kickoff survey on there with a couple of questions just to get people acclimated with the project website so they can register on the site, take the survey. We're asking questions about, you know, your vision for Manhattan and the core services that individuals want the city to provide. We also asked them how they had wished to participate during this first round of public engagement. So far, we received, this is as of the end of the day yesterday, we've received about 250 responses of the survey. I just saw Jason Smith in the chamber put out a notice in their Monday Matters, so hoping to see an uptick and some more survey response over the next week. But about 75% said that they wish to participate virtually this time. So fortunately, we chose maybe the right path forward for this first round of the week of March 22nd. We've been working with Vivian, our PIO, to really start broadcasting to the mediums that we can. We've put out information in our Insider Newsletter. We put out a press release posting on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We're reaching out with other media channels, K-Man, The Mercury, The Collegian. We're working on getting an article in the K-State Today to reach out to our student population and looking at some other mediums that we don't typically do to kind of reach a diverse audience, like using Pandora and some other streaming platforms that, to get the word out about Crossroads MHK. And then one thing that you'll see in front of you all is some printouts of our RAC card that gives everyone the dates of the public meetings and basically directs them to the website to register for one of the public meetings that we're having that Sarah and Jamie are gonna talk to you about. There's also a little business card there that's kind of gonna be universal throughout this entire process that you can give people to just direct them to the website to give them a little information about the strategic planning process. And then tonight, I'll be sending you all our publicity toolkit that we have provided our community project committee. We've provided our staff technical committee and other key stakeholders throughout the community with electronic files and additional information to start spreading the word. Elevator speeches, social media posts that you could, you all can push out on your content to your constituents, a lot of that information so that you can utilize it how you see fit over the next week and a half to really start promoting the process. But with that, I'll let Jamie and Sarah share their screen and start their presentation just to give you a little overview of what we're gonna be doing the week of March 22nd.
Great, thanks Jared, and thank you. Nice to be back with you all. We, Jared gave a great overview of all the hard work that him and Vivian especially have been working on for the past week, week and a half, just putting a lot of the communication channels in place and play there in the community so we can start spreading the word. And the Community Committee is also doing their work. I'm gonna share a few slides about that a little later, but this is exciting. We've just, you know, a couple of weeks now until our first major, you know, round of public input, and so we're really ramping up. So we're gonna give you a little preview tonight, and if you've got, you know, questions, we'll obviously entertain those. So first, the purpose of the Round One Engagement has sort of multi, multi-points to it. So first, we wanna inform the public about Crossroads. So I could, that's simple enough, that there's a planning process going on to develop a strategic plan for the city. We wanna also educate the public about, you know, some existing conditions and trends. I think you know we've been working on an environmental scan, and we're getting very close to having a draft of that, and that's gonna be available on the website as well when it's ready. So folks can dig into that if they want. We're gonna give them just some high-level, you know, highlights of it, but some good foundational information about, you know, why we're doing this strategic plan and a little bit about the existing conditions and trends. And then this third point is really where we're gonna spend the bulk of our time. I wanna gather initial insight, ideas, and feedback that will inform the plan from, from the community. So most of our time in this first round will be, you know, in this gathering mode. And then simply, we wanna make a good impression. You know, we wanna make sure that people want to stay engaged. We're gonna be doing another round in May, and we want people to, you know, continue to participate through the website and also come out again in May for, for a second round. So some of the objectives of the Round One that we've developed, you know, in concert with the Community Committee is that, you know, it was really important that it's easy for people to participate. We're offering, you can see on the cards in front of you, we're offering multiple days and different times of the day to try to make it as convenient as possible. We're also offering multiple ways to engage. So, you know, besides the virtual meetings, which we're really promoting those, we'd love for everyone to, you know, find a time that works for them and join us for those. We're also gonna offer self-paced online opportunities as well, the last two weeks of March, that will mimic some of the questions and input gathering that we're beginning doing in the virtual meetings. And then we're also gonna be working with the Community Committee to offer a meeting in a box opportunity. So we're gonna package up everything, script, survey questionnaires, comment cards, what have you, into a packet, both digitally and hard copy if they want to meet in groups, small groups, safely or virtually. And that's where we can really sort of do some targeting of certain hard-to-reach groups or target demographics. And the group, the committee has already done a good job of identifying some of those, so we're hoping to supplement with that. And then working with Jared, we are also offering what I would call limited in-person viewing of the virtual meeting. So if there's somebody in the community who doesn't have access to technology or isn't comfortable with the virtual meeting platform, we're asking for them to reach out to Jared, and then we're gonna set up maybe a viewing place. Could be the city building or at a branch library for folks to come in and view those virtual meetings and participate. We also wanna ensure safe and productive engagement given the current and ongoing pandemic, so that was really important. I think Jared shared that we put that question out there initially, and we've gotten, you know, over 250 responses of folks saying like, "Yeah, I'm comfortable doing the virtual engagement," so we're, you know, we wanna make sure that we're, we're being safe but productive as well. And then we're also offering different types of input activities. So survey questions, we're gonna have some small group discussions, open-ended comments. So we wanna make sure we're offering different ways for people to provide their input so that they feel that they've been able to share in different ways. So the Round One Engagement overview, as Jared said, it is planned for the week of March 22nd is when the virtual meetings are planned, but that, really, I think we should think of it as the last two weeks of March. So those virtual meetings are happening in the first week, but then we're gonna have the online activities open those whole two weeks, and the meeting in the box are gonna be taking place. We're gonna ask the committee to be doing those in those two weeks as well. So the virtual meetings, again, I think I mentioned this, they'll be all the same format so people can just choose whichever time and day works best for them. And then we'll have the self-paced online activities available, meeting in the box, and then, of course, the limited in-person viewing. So during the meetings, the virtual meetings, you know, we're really gonna gather input in two different ways. We're gonna have discussion, we're gonna use the Zoom platform, so we're gonna have the opportunity to do the breakout sessions, and we've already got committee members gonna be telling us like which meetings they can help us facilitate. So we'd like to have a committee member or planning team member in each of these small groups to help facilitate the conversation and take notes. And then we're gonna do some live polling using smartphone devices or tablets where people can contribute using their phone. It populates a screen, kind of like this image here. We asked a question about their favorite place to take visitors, and then people were starting to chime in there, and it was creating a word cloud. So it's really fun to have, to see no matter where people are, and maybe they're in their own homes, but they can see what other people are sharing. So also, on those same lines, you know, some of the types of questions, we're developing the questions right now, and, and we can give more specifics, but right now, we're really looking at asking some demographic information from folks. We wanna know who is, you know, who's participating with us, and we're gonna gather some of that through some of the warm-up questions that we do with the live polling. We wanna ask people, you know, how they experience the city currently, the city facilities and city services, you know. Folks maybe, you know, you know, really just engage by paying their utility bill, and others maybe take advantage of a lot of different services and facilities in the city, so we're gonna get some information on that. We're gonna do a word cloud activity that asks them what they love, one word about what they love most about Manhattan, to try to get to some of those values of the community. We're gonna ask them to think about their vision for the future, and that's gonna be a small group discussion question. And then we're also gonna talk a little bit about mission, mission for the city, and get some input from folks about what they think the city really should be focusing on as far as, you know, their mission. And we're gonna talk a little bit about outcomes as well, what they wanna see come out of the plan. So we're gonna do a lot, and we're gonna get a lot of good, you know, hopefully good information in a number of different ways. So I'm gonna pause there, as I know I just went through quite a bit, but I'm gonna pause and see if you all have any questions about the plan for this first round of engagement.
Hi, this is Commissioner Hesterbrook. What would, in your mind, be how successful in one of these dates, let's say, or one of the four, what's kind of the goal that we're trying to hit as far as participation?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. It's kind of hard to pinpoint that, but, you know, I think in a community the size of Manhattan, we, we wanna offer these multiple ways, so I think we should, we'll, we'll be looking at it individually by how many people participate in the virtual meeting, you know, how many participate online, how many different folks are touched through the meeting in a box. So we'll, we'll know that, but I think we have to look at it collectively. But like, I wanted to give this update really quick. We have, we just, you know, we're starting the promotion, really going in now the two weeks before to really promote this, but we have 58 people registered right now across the four meetings, and the first meeting, actually, we got 33 people registered. So we really wanna see more than that. I mean, we'd love to see, you know, hundred, couple hundred at each of these meetings. We can handle that on the Zoom, we can, we can, we have enough. I'm confident with the, between the Staff Technical Committee and the Community Committee that we have enough folks to facilitate. So it'd be great if we could get up to that as far as, far as these virtual meetings, but, you know, we found that sometimes, you know, those virtual meetings, if they're not as well attended, that people make up for it by participating in the self-paced online activities as well. So I wanna, I think we need to, we wanna promote, you know, each of the individual ways people can get involved, but when we look at this, we wanna look at it in the totality because all of those different ways that they're engaging is all feeding, you know, the same database, the same questions, and so we really will look at it in totality. But, you know, we really wanna get as many people as we can, and it'd be great if we could get, you know, over 100 or 200 people at each of these meetings.
This is Commissioner Ready. I think, you know, when you have it for the week of March 22nd, it's good that you have on four of those days, a morning time, an afternoon time, and an evening time. And it could be, even though people might be working remotely, they're still working on their work hours. So hopefully, if you see a huge group of people in those evening hours, that you hope, you know, have another week where they can also, if that's the time that was most popular, that you give them a few more days to chime in at that time. I know, being on Zoom meetings, because there are Zoom meetings, I am on so many meetings all the time, and all of them are important, but if you want them to be a part of this, it would be good to see which one was the most popular one and also kick that out again. I do like the options you did give though for morning, noon, and evening.
Great, thank you. Any other questions about the plan for the first round?
Commissioner Morris. Other than, just other than to say, I think it's important that we engage the public on their terms, and you have provided for in-person and, and online, and so it'll mat, I guess it will depend on the questions that they're asked. So at this point, we have three examples, which is fine for today, and so we don't know a lot at the moment.
Yeah, we can, we can, we're getting really close to having the, you know, the actual, we're working on the wording and the framing, there'll be a setup for each question, so we can get that to you all through Jared as a follow-up if you wanna see the actual specific wording of each question. We're getting really close, we reviewed that with Jared today and talked through a few things. So we're, we're getting close on that, and we can definitely share that with you all, you know, ahead of, you know, the 22nd, if you've got any specific feedback on the questions or the wording of the questions.
Are you gonna be, Jared, are you gonna be going through these groups again to refine it? So I noticed in the, on the last page of the 90 community groups, that number 62 and 65 are identical.
Oh, so you're referring to the groups and the slides. Those are the out, the groups that our Community Committee has identified, that they are close with and that they're going to reach out to.
Yeah.
So, sorry about the, if there is a duplication there. Looks like we have two people maybe who are close in that group.
I don't know. I just don't see the Housing Authority. I don't know that it has to be included, but I just see the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership is listed twice, so whatever it takes to, to finish the list and eliminate the duplication. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if you've got other questions, we can, we'll circle back at the end, but I would like to, Jared already touched on a number of this, a number of these items, but the publicity toolkit, you've got some hard copies of the engagement invitation in front of you, I believe, but there's a whole suite of resources that Jared will send out by email to you. We've got flyers and posters and a program bulletin where it's two to a page, so you can put it in half and put it like in a church bulletin or a program of some sort, with the business card, FAQ document. So again, these are resources that we provided to the Community Committee and other partners like the Chamber to push out to their, you know, into their networks, but to make it easy and for folks to, to help us spread the word and personally invite people into the process. So you'll get a, you'll get these resources sent out to you here soon. And I, and I would like to really commend the, the Community Committee that you all pointed for this process because they have been great. They've been super engaged, we've got good, you know, participation in the meetings, and they, we gave them a homework assignment after the first meeting, and they all got together in their little small groups and, and worked on a couple, on a worksheet about their commitment to outreach. And so they identified, 32 here, hard-to-reach groups, that they're gonna work hard to try to, you know, reach out to, and that we're gonna keep, be mindful of as we get our demographics and participation input, if we can try to make sure that we're reaching out to some of these, these folks. So this was really good to see, we're gonna be keeping this in mind, they're gonna be working on these groups. And then I think what Linda was mentioning was these 90, this was impressive. I think this is the most community groups I've ever had identified by a, a committee. They did a great job, and I'm sorry if there's a couple of people, 'cause we'll sort that out, maybe somebody used the same term, but maybe they meant the Housing Authority, but these were groups that the committee, the Community Committee brainstormed together. We combined some, you know, there was some K-State, different affiliations with K-State, you know, different places of worship. Of course, these aren't every church in Manhattan, but the ones that they have connections to, the different ethnic communities. So we were really impressed with this list, you know, the different, like Rotary and different groups like that. So again, these are, these are groups that represent the committee's connections, like connections that they have to, that they're willing to, you know, put something in a newsletter or speak up at a meeting, say, "Hey, there's this Crossroads process going on, we'd love for you to get involved, spend a virtual meeting in March." And then this, this group also, I think, becomes, is also with the hard-to-reach groups, becomes a group that we can look to as we start to do the meeting in a box. So asking the Community Committee to look through their networks and, and maybe also aligning with some of the, if we're missing a certain age group or a certain demographic, once we see who participated in the first round in the virtual meetings, we can, you know, do some filling in using some of these different groups to make sure that we're getting a cross-section of the community. So I was really impressed to see all the different groups that they, that they identified and that they're working hard to, to reach out to. And so they've, they've been given the publicity toolkit, and they're, they know their charge, so they all are doing their, their work. And so, you know, I think our ask tonight is to have, you know, have you help us spread the word as well. You know, you all have your own constituents and networks, and I know a number of you maybe have, you know, do it, I know Erin does a newsletter and different ways to communicate with your, your network, so if you could help us spread the word, point people to the website, they can sign up for a meeting, virtual meeting, and just let them know that there's an opportunity to get involved, that would be really, really helpful. So that's all I have. If there's any other questions or comments, we'd be happy to take those now.
We, we do plan to be back in front of you during a work session sometime in April following this to really, after Planning Nexus has time to synthesize all the results from all the virtual meetings, meeting in a box approaches, and other avenues through the website to provide that overview of what we heard. So we plan to be back here in about a month.
Sarah, this is Commissioner Hesterbrook. I think if you or Jamie, just one, one thing that I, as, as you're kind of starting to ramp this up and it's word is spreading and those community groups are being activated and made aware of this, some of the initial responses, "Well, what the heck are you guys doing, and what is this for? What are you going to do with this information?" And so I, we just went through a great thing, but I think if you wanted to just summarize, and it's in this, in this flyer here, you know, what, what, it's the first ever set of priorities and tying that to spending, and explaining that to people and why it's important is seeming to be pretty crucial at this point, and given that we're in a crunch for time to make those decisions in the upcoming budget, the, the, I don't wanna let the perfect get in the way of the good, I guess, but I also want people to understand what the purpose of, or what, what we're doing here. I think they need to be reminded.
Yeah, no, that's really important. I appreciate that comment. We, we're definitely, when we, we've got some base information up on the website now, but during the virtual meetings, part of that sort of informing slash educating component of it is gonna be a series of, you know, concise, clear, you know, presentation slides that get at what we're doing, right? We're developing a strategic plan, the first one, for the city that really looks at the city as an organization, and making that distinction, I think, is something that we've heard from the committee, that like, there's been a lot of studies and plans and great things that have been done at the larger, even the larger regional scale, right? But this is the first time that you've really looked at the organization of the city in the form of, of local government. So I think that distinction's important to make for people so they can understand that this is about, you know, the city services and facilities and things that, that you all provide for them. And then I think the other thing is that we wanna make sure through some of the slides for the environmental scan that they can appreciate, you know, where, where the city is, you know, in growth and other metrics, you know, so that they can be informed and sort of maybe, you know, that helps them as they think about their, their inputs. So I think that we, you're right, we need to educate them about, you know, the, the purpose of this and that we're trying to really get to some, you know, priorities for the city and make them aware that, of some of the conditions and trends that are impacting, you know, both, both the city, but also the, you know, there's, there's regional and national trends that are at play about, you know, future retail and things like that that are affecting places and cities, and they need to be aware of that. Jamie, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, but those are my two cents worth.
I would just reinforce that we're, you know, we, we appreciate the reminder because people need to be really laser-focused on the motivation for why this is being done. And we can do that before they engage with us, but also when they engage with us. For example, at the beginning of any one of these engagements, you know, the talking point should include, in the, in the very first thing, you know, "Why are we doing this? And how are you, what are you doing tonight? How's that gonna fit into, to, to what we're doing?" So I appreciate the reminder, we will be more focused on it and, you know, remind the committee of that as well.
And the, the information that you are seeing on the FAQ on the back of that RAC card and, and that language is kind of the consistent language that we're using throughout all of our communications promotions and the materials that we provided all of our Community Committee members to, to kind of use that language and that understanding. So when people ask, "Why, yeah, why are we doing this?", we can give them a solid answer.
Thank you. Okay, for a great, great update, do we have any, anybody in the audience that wants to say anything? Probably for the next session then. Okay, I appreciate the, the work so far and looking forward to the final product. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Bye.
And we'll move on to the Aggieville Plan, which has got a couple of little sub-points for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I will start off with slides I would probably typically end with. Just for, well, let me share this, so focus on the Zoom, know what I'm covering. So our update this evening is primarily about here, really for the next year. We've got two major topics that we wanna cover this evening. North Manhattan Avenue, we're obviously in a design phase, but then also our parking management. Both of these tie back into our parking garage. One is adjacent to it by way of infrastructure. Looking for feedback so we can get started on that construction. We think we're gonna gain a lot by having these projects coincide with each other. One potential alternative that we're throwing out to you this evening is an amendment to the Construction Manager at Risk contract with McCown Gordon, since they're building the parking garage, they're building Laramie, they're reconstructing parts of 14th Street. The North Manhattan segment, it'd make a lot of sense, in our opinion, to go ahead and amend that project into that Construction Manager at Risk contract to avoid any type of conflicts and delays and efficiencies that we can gain. We'd like to explore that with you this evening. Parking management, we have Walker Consultants on the, on the Zoom call here. Andrew Vador will be able to cover a lot of what we're talking about and how we're gonna handle parking management, not only in the garage, but throughout the entire district. We're looking at an implementation phase that would start really now, but by way of enforcement, not until 2022, not until the garage is open. He'll walk you through a lot of those, those specifics. The first thing we were looking to do is get into a final design contract for North Manhattan. That would be in April. Then May, June, and July, we would look to finalize that design. We would develop and execute that change order or that amendment with McCown Gordon, and then we would further develop the parking management plan. August, September is when we were thinking about having construction start. If we can start North Manhattan in August and September, then we can coincide completion of the parking garage and North Manhattan at the same time. Looking at about a six-month construction period. If we, the earlier we can get them started, the better. Mark and Olson and their team with OHH need to hit the ground running with the design if we're gonna make up some ground and meet this deadline. Then throughout the fall and the winter, you'd see parking garage, all the street segments, and we'd obviously get into parking management decision-making. By February, March of '22, we would be looking to open the parking garage, the streets would be complete, the sidewalks, all the amenities that we're talking about, and it would really set the stage for the west side of Aggieville to be in a, in a position to handle the parking, to handle the traffic flows and the pedestrians, and then move east. If the RFP is successful and we're at a point this summer where we can make some decisions on the potential parking lot redevelopment revitalization, we talked this even today with Rob Otte and Brian Johnson about the next phase potentially being 12th Street and Laramie adjacent to that city parking lot. That would be the next design phase and ultimately then the next construction phase to coincide and gain efficiencies again with potentially that parking lot under construction. So the direction and feedback tonight, before we really get into all the images and the concepts, this 45-degree angle allows the sidewalks to be at the width they are, the parking lots, the angled stalls to be at the width, the driving lane, and the contraflow bike lane. It allows it all to occur. If we change that degree of angle to a 60, which it is today, there's not enough room for all those things. Something would have to give. Sidewalks would have to narrow, lane width and contraflow lane would have to be adjusted. So what we have in front of you this evening is attempting to get the pedestrians on the sidewalks, the angled stalls, the driving lane, and the bike lane. Looking for construction again, August, September. We need to finalize those design contracts soon and address that construction manager at risk. With that, I'm going to hop into our packet item and really walk through the images that are associated with, I better stop sharing because I probably didn't pick that up. Walk through some of the images that we've partnered with Olson and OHH. And Mark, you're welcome to join me if you'd like to add to the detail. So it's really not convenient that we don't have a projector up, but you do have a lot of paperwork in front of you. Hopefully you have these images or can see the TV. This is the northern edge of the North Manhattan entry. So it's right off Blumente. On your right in the image would be Triangle Park. And you can see there's a median that separates the bikes at this point from the flow of traffic. Obviously, we'll maintain a one-way south coming off Blumente. You'll still have the angled stall, the angle has changed from 60 to 45. We've created some bulbouts and some opportunities for trees, shade, benches, plantings, some streetscape, landscape features within this area. And you can start to see, obviously, a new feature. The overarching "Welcome to Aggieville" signage roughly about the alley point between Little Moro and Blumente. As we continue to work our way, this is a straight-on shot, kind of gives you the whole view then of North Manhattan, Triangle Park here on the right. You can see the bike lane continues all the way through. And it's important to note where that bike lane is going and where it's coming from. If you head south, the way we have the bike lane through Fremont, the paved path through the park, picking up then the bike lane on South Manhattan, it'll take you all the way to the linear trail and a consistent flow and a protected, you know, shared, a bike lane or this contraflow lane through the Aggieville. If you turn around and head north, obviously we have bike lanes on both sides of North Manhattan today, all the way up to Claflin. You pick up Claflin, now you're onto a, I think it's eight or 10-foot path up North Manhattan all the way to Kimball. We're going to talk about a protected bike lane on North Manhattan from Blumente to Claflin soon. It's part of your packet tonight. There's a lot of explanation as to why this feature is in Aggieville, and there's a lot of advocacy for it. We're, we have crossings that are going to get new signals on North Manhattan, and Jared can jump in there and give you more feedback and detail. It's a project that's on the horizon as well, but it ties into what we're doing here in Aggieville. Get a little bit deeper, you start to see a little bit more of the features, the alleyway that I mentioned. Triangle Park sidewalks, really not a whole lot different. And that's really the barrier on the west is that sidewalk edge. We're not going into the park at all. We won't get into Little Moro. It'll stop right there in front of Rally House and will continue all the way down to Laramie and then eventually to Fremont. So this is the corner of Triangle Park and Little Moro, kind of a back angle. So you were looking to the northeast here, you kind of see the backside. There's a bike rack area along with a pedestrian path that's consistent. These brick pavers are very similar to what you see in front of Luton and So Long and Tanner's along 12th Street. The feature gives you another view, the same limestone type of seating. These plantings will start to show up on 12th Street in the next few weeks as we get irrigation in place and the sidewalks done around the hotel. So it'll be a very similar palette as well. Just another angle. Again, you can kind of get the feel between the darker brick and the more red brick, very consistent with what we did on 12th Street, not a lot new. Same type of streetscape and landscaping and lighting. We'll have to get more detail on these features as far as the overarching entryway to get you a better feel for the materials and the height and some detail at the corners. Predominant movement for trucks is really down Little Moro. Then they jog into the alley just to the north, so it's the alley between Moro and Blumente. And then talking with Aggieville and some of the leadership down there, I think there's some desire for that truck movement to be west to east and not allow it back. So they come in on the west side and they either enter off Little Moro or Laramie, and then they find their ways to the alleys. And it could be something in the future, we try to keep them off Moro, try to keep them off 12th Street and really take them through the alleys in the district to serve the businesses. Not everybody can be served by the alley, we recognize that, but as much as we possibly can, try to have that movement take place.
Jason, I got a question. On the west side, so towards Triangle Park where that feature is for the arch, that, there's a giant power pole there, right, currently?
I think it's just outside of it. There's one image here that actually, did he take it out? He may have taken it.
I'm just interested in, I mean, that moving the power around is going to be involved in this.
Yeah, and some of our older images, he left it in there. I'll pull it up here in a minute and I'll show you, but I don't think it conflicts with that arch right now. But it's pretty close, and it has to stay. I mean, it's just an enormous pole.
It's actually further to the south, yeah.
So they provided a number of images. I want to make sure we talk about, yes, we haven't got there yet, just another perspective from the south. This is basically from Fremont and looking back to the north. And it gives you a feel for street trees and some amenities that you could see around Chipotle and then Laramie and then heading south. This is an angle that I wanted to make sure we talked about. So we showed a lot of imagery, you know, with the angled stalls maintaining themselves north of Moro. Once you hit Moro, you can see there used to be parallel parking here by Buffalo Wild Wings, by Redena's. And with what we've got going on sidewalk-wise, two lanes of traffic and a bike lane, we've eliminated that, those five stalls. There are five there today, those five parallel stalls. Part of our rationale, obviously, is to make room for what it is we desire in this area by way of pedestrian vehicle, but also recognize the parking garage that is just across the street with 450 stalls. You'll see later in part of our parking management, there is a suggestion to start with 30 minutes with no charge. That is up for negotiation, and it's up for really a decision made by the governing body, just how long we want to allow that individual to be in the district without having to pay for that parking stall. So that's obviously up for conversation, but I would point this out just because it is an elimination of parking. The northern side has 19 stalls today. It drops to 14 in this scenario, and these five go away. So this is a loss of 10 parking stalls along the North Manhattan corridor from Laramie to Blumente with this concept. Obviously, the gain in the garage is occurring. We've had a lot of good conversations, some of which you've gotten some public comment this evening, some good feedback. There's some businesses down here that really rely on that 15-minute, 30-minute, 45-minute experience with customers coming and going, whether they're buying a cup of coffee, a donut, something to eat. That there's, we received that feedback. It was consistent. There's a lot of businesses here that they do, they rely on the parking right out in front of them. We haven't had the experience with the garage. It's hard to predict just what it's going to do for them. We haven't had the experience with potential new tenants and new development. Those are things on the horizon. I don't necessarily look at them as they're chewing up parking. I still look at them as customers, additional customers that they never had. I had the same opinion about the hotel, and I know even at the time, a few years ago, when we were talking about that, there were even adjacencies, even restaurants that weren't all excited about using that parking for a hotel. I understand. I mean, people are used to patterns. People like to see their customers back to where they're normal, they're frequent, they're consistent. I get that. We're disrupting things. There's no argument there. This is a change, and it's definitely something that we're aware of. We know they're concerned with, and they've shared those concerns with you. Wanted to make sure we covered this part of the presentation first. I know you've got some folks in the audience who have an interest in the concepts. We can obviously take questions about North Manhattan. We're looking at a budget between $2.5 and $3 million. That does include subgrade. We have some storm drainage and water, I believe, that we and sewer that we need to address in this area. Those revenue streams would be there and available, but, you know, really throughout the entire district, I know a lot of the discussion is about what's at the surface level and above, but we've got some subgrade infrastructure we absolutely have to address, and it's driving a lot of the pace as well. That water line on Moro is still very concerning, but we're getting there. We brought water line down 12th Street. We'll bring water down North Manhattan. And when we get to Moro, we'll really knock out a very high concern for the utility department, so. Questions, thoughts, reactions to North Manhattan, furthering that design, looking for that construction opportunity this fall with our partner who has assisted with the 12th Street construction as well. So Mayor, Commissioners, open.
Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, that this relocation of the bike lane, you know, it does sacrifice some parking, but where it currently is, you know, it just, it didn't work. I remember, you know, voting on that years ago, and people drive a big pickup truck up there and the end of it, you know, goes over the curb, and it totally destroyed the bike lane. And then you had the problem of people continuing to ride their bikes on the sidewalk, and I think this alleviates that by having a complete through fare through there. And we did get a lot of, you know, emails on this topic. I think every one of them was in support of it. Some concern from a couple of business owners, as you pointed out, you know, losing that short-term parking, so we do need to address that. But I think generally, at least the public reaction I got from, you know, the forums that were sent in, and I think the rest of the commission saw those, was pretty positive for, you know, doing it. And I'm glad to hear that we got, you know, funding. That was my main concern, was funding. But if we're going to tear up all the stuff below grade, it, you know, pretty much covers the cost of fixing what's above grade. So comments from the commission?
London Morris, I had a question. You mentioned $2.5 to $3 million. That would be just exactly for what?
That would be for the North Manhattan Avenue construction project, which would be both below grade
Below and?
And above, yes. And that would stretch from Blumente. Does it go all the way to Fremont in that estimate? Yeah, all the way to Fremont.
And then how much for the other infrastructure you were talking about on Moro? That'll be eventual, right?
Oh, yeah. We haven't reached a point where we've went beyond what we did in 2016, 2017 with the forecast where we had, oh, I think we were roughly about $35 million for the entire district, but that included the garage and all the streets. So every segment of roadway, every block or two, I think we can expect a $2 to $3 million type of budget.
Per block?
Yep. This is obviously, this is three blocks. It's a little less intense than we did on 12th Street because we created the trench drain in the middle on 12th and obviously bricked the entire half-block. We're obviously going back with concrete here, but brick sidewalks, so it's a little less intense.
And then the parking garage is, how much is it?
It's a $14 million garage.
Just getting it on the top of my brain as we start talking about it.
Absolutely.
Okay. I know that at one time we talked about improving the alleys. Is that a future project then, as we improve some of these other main streets like South 12th or?
It is, and it's something that Rob Otte went through a few weeks ago, and 2025. And again, I apologize for the projector not being up there for you, but I'm showing the image to the public and the audience anyway. But 2025 is when Rob had laid out those potentially being addressed from a design and construction standpoint.
And even that alley there east of North Manhattan, that would be a future project too?
Correct, yeah.
I'm interested in, as I've said every time we've ever talked about it, in preserving the Triangle Park and making sure that the pressure from all of the other things we're doing doesn't disrupt that. I think that's a signature thing for Aggieville. I am interested in the character of Aggieville. I think I may have to give that up. Because it's, what we're doing isn't in the character of the existing Aggieville, anyway. So the bicycle traffic along North Manhattan would be on the west side of the street, northbound and south. It's two-way, that's the point, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but on the west seems like it would disrupt the businesses less if the bike lane were over there. So the discussion is whether there's parking or no parking then across in front of the businesses?
No, the angle of the stall, yes.
Okay.
Between Moro and Laramie, there's five parallel stalls that would go away in this concept.
So our discussion tonight is about the angle then?
The angle reduces it from 19 to 14. In addition, there are a couple of places where we took parking stalls and created streetscape. We added trees, we added irrigated bushes and flowers and areas for pedestrians to cross the street.
How do we make sure that the trees in five years don't block the businesses?
Well, trees naturally are going to obviously grow.
They're going to grow.
Flourish, and we see that downtown too.
I know, and you come through and whack them all off and plant new ones, and 12 years later, you're doing it again.
Yep.
Just trying to think about how we can.
The type of tree that we select, you know, can reach a certain height. We hear, we heard that more downtown. In fact, I think we spent a lot of time figuring out where those tree grates were going to be as they pertain to people's signage. We can do the same here. If there's a real concern with some of the businesses, we can, we can talk about whether they want them directly in front, to the right, to the left. I mean, I think there's some flexibility there with where we place these, and we can work with the owners if that's a concern.
I just know downtown has a history of the trees. This area doesn't.
Very true, and it's very hot.
It's a different whole thing. And then what about the intersection of Blumente and North Manhattan? You're going to be completely redoing that?
Just the North Manhattan leg, so we won't touch the Blumente intersection.
Okay.
It, obviously, it wasn't done that long ago, so it's still functioning. It'll, it's, obviously it wasn't done that long ago, so it's, it's still functioning. Uh, moving the bike lane movement over by the pedestrian will, will create some efficiencies at that intersection. But I know our engineers are...
And then going north on Man- North Manhattan Avenue from Aggieville, is, is the bike lane on both sides, isn't it?
We're, we're moving the bike lane.
Moving it to the west side.
To the west side.
Okay, and it'll be two, two-way, okay?
Yes.
Clear up to Claflin, I think is what.
That's the plan. Yep. Yep.
And does that require a lot of infrastructure changes or is that just a matter of remarking things?
Given the, the bike lanes today are on both sides and moving them on the left-hand side. Jared may have to com- comment here. I don't think there was a whole lot of infrastructure change by way of sidewalks and curb lines, but...
There, there is a bit. We're, we're not touching the, uh, the campus wall at all, so we do have enough cross-section to deal with what's existing. Uh, we'll probably be doing a new sidewalk along that entire way. We'll be removing some of those strips of grass on the the west side as well, so it'll be a wider sidewalk for pedestrians. We're gonna tear up the intersections of Veteer, Thurston, and Petticoat and put in brand-new full signalizations at those areas. So those areas are gonna change. We'll be putting in new crosswalks at all of those areas. Uh, there will be, I believe, some median work probably mark as well as, um, the new striping. Yeah, and and I believe there is a, because you're shifting where the center lane becomes, I believe there's a little mill and overlay, uh, with that to, uh, get the crown of the street right. I'm, I'm probably making all this up though, cause I'm not a engineer.
Actually, you're doing a good job.
Wow, okay.
Now, the only, the only thing that the east curb line stays the same.
Okay.
So as you can tell, there's a bike lane on the east side, so everything shifts over. The road shifts over to the east, takes away that bike lane, and then we work from that to the west. So that west curb line will change. It'll move, it'll move in and then that gives room for your bicycle path, your cycle track, and then your sidewalk up next to the rock wall.
You're, you're redoing the intersection at Fourteenth and Bloom- and Bloom- is it Anderson? Yeah, it's Anderson by the time it gets there. As, as part of this project or is that, uh, the current one?
Current one.
Okay, right.
Yep, right by, we'll go Burger King, down to Quick Shop and do the
Right.
sidewalks and the streetscape, and then we'll get into that intersection and make some improvements there for pedestrians and I believe stormwater as well.
Okay. Thank you for the review.
You bet. There's a lot going on down there.
Helps get us centered.
Commissioner Haddasall here. Um, uh, I like it. I think it's, uh, it's one of those things where there's trade-offs with everything. If you want bike lanes, then you're probably gonna lose some parking and so it's, we'll try this for a decade and then we'll try and look at it again in ten or fifteen years and see if we need to improve it again. Um, is the bike lane planned to be six foot, eight foot? I suppose there's a standard for that. Is that the case?
Yes, there's, there are standard eight foot.
Eight foot.
So for the two, for the two lanes within that eight foot.
And so how much, um, in order to to stick with the sixty-degree, how small, how much, how many more feet? If you wanted to try to do the seven, sixty-degree parking instead of the forty-five?
It will...
How much more, how many more feet would you need to make that work?
Well, what you do is you take away the sidewalk width.
Okay.
Because if you're going on a forty-five and you go at a sixty, it, it increases the length. So you'll just take more out of the sidewalk.
Two, two feet, one foot, eight?
I, my gut is saying two feet, but I, I don't know the exact number. My gut is thinking two.
And that, uh, and how wide is that sidewalk supposed to be through that area, right?
Well...
Triangle Park area? Or you're, you're talking the west side sidewalk?
I'm talking about the east side.
Oh.
The west side, well, I mean, I guess you can, if you, if you take two feet, you can go both directions. But I was assuming if you take an additional two feet, you would take it out of the sidewalk on the east side.
Which is supposed to be how wide in?
Well, it's fourteen now, so it'd be twelve, so it'd be less than what it is today.
Okay. But you, you're, you're planning on keeping it at fourteen?
We're, we're trying to keep it at a, at a, at a, at a good width that gives it an amenity width.
Jason, is, is fourteen enough to try to do any outside, sitting there, one table next to the building or something maybe?
Yeah, you know, a lot of the, we didn't get a lot of that feedback from those businesses, that there was a lot of interest in doing outdoor dining or outdoor type of, uh, conduct of, of their business. Um, you know, we met with everybody on that North Manhattan stretch and talked about that option. Um, we would rather integrate it into the design if it was, uh, something desired, but, you know, we, we also gave feedback that the businesses that exist there today aren't going to be there forever. This is obviously for multiple decades, we hope, so we do think there are some opportunities if we can keep the width of these sidewalks where they're at to do some things.
So, all right, um, and I would agree, we should do the construction manager at risk, just extend that for economies of scale and and timelines and trying to, as long as they're already pre-staged and everything, let's keep them there and just finish that off.
Um, my, I'm looking forward to hearing public comment if there is any, but, uh, I just wanted to reflect back a couple of mon- or a couple of meetings ago, I think, uh, two points were made that are still pretty relevant to this is that, one, that, that double or that, uh, divided bike path, protected bike path is, when we did the Bike Ped Systems Plan a year ago, was a top priority that we approved. And, uh, number two being that, as Jason's indicated multiple times, this is perhaps a once every forty years type thing. So if it's a top priority and we only get one shot in forty years, uh, that kind of brings the, the focus to that being a, I think, why we're hearing about it a lot, but also why we've already kind of committed to that being important. Um, lastly, I would say all of this is being discussed in part because of what's underground and nobody cares too much about that. We don't get a lot of email from the sewer lines and the water pipes, but, uh, really that's what drives it. I know so many people in the community will probably see the top and say, look, they're trying to decorate the Aggieville area. Why, really, it's, it's driven a lot by what's underground, so I just wanna keep that always in our, our frame. How we, we're trying to provide that service, but while we do it, um, let's do it well.
And this is Commissioner Ready. So, um, you know, we often assume that because it is the Aggieville Vision Plan and we've been working on it a few years, that they're constantly updated each time it comes up to the city commission. So when I didn't receive any emails from the businesses and I received a lot from the, uh, bike sector, I assumed they must have gotten, their organization got information that this is gonna be on docket, therefore we got the feedback. So today, I, you know, I said, I can't imagine nobody's talking about the fees or the garage man. To me, that's important if they're gonna start paying fees. So I emailed a couple of business owners in Aggieville to see what they thought about it, and that's where you got a couple of those emails today. So I don't want us to make the assumption that everybody in Aggieville is okay with what's going on and understand everything that we're discussing. Some of them didn't, most of them didn't even know we're talking about it tonight till it came, till I brought it back up to them. So if I had emailed them earlier, which is on me, uh, maybe would, would have gotten more feedback, which I, which would have helped a little bit more in this discussion. Um, I think Mark brings up a, a good point about the width of the sidewalks. And, uh, if, if we can reduce some of that width on that side and give them, is it, um, forty-five, forty-five degrees and sixty degrees? Is that what we're discussing as far as the angle of the parking?
Yeah, and, and we can show you some concepts, Commissioner. If we go to sixty, uh, we would have to shrink our sidewalks in order to keep the bike lane. So they would have to get smaller and, and, yeah, less width.
That's what I, I think that, isn't that what Commissioner Haddasall was inferring?
I thought he was advocating for wider sidewalks.
Wider sidewalks, okay.
Or recognizing the sidewalks were a benefit.
Well, I was just wondering if, if, if we need more feet, I, nobody wants to lose any space in Triangle Park, but if, if we could look, take, if we're gonna have to do new curb, new sidewalk and stuff anyway, I was just gonna suggest, yeah, if we could cut two feet into, and not take the, take the, not take the sidewalk off the east side, make it any smaller, keep it, but cut into, to Triangle Park two more feet to get, uh, to get those. Is the sixty get us four more, five more? Is it five? Is that what we would lose or gain with sixty versus forty-five?
Well, the, I'm gonna be very cautious for making this statement because we're, we're established with the intersection of North Manhattan and Blumont. So we just can't arbitrarily shift it to the west, the road. So I, I, we can, we can geometrically look at that, but I would be a little cautious about saying that we can just put a curb in there. Cause you, you can put curves, but there are standards to put the curves in. So I'd be, I'd, I'd, I'd wanna look at that. And then we also have to hit where Pi Five used to be. So, you know, we're, we're, you can see kinda in this drawing here where it's kinda curved a little bit. Well, it's because we gotta hit certain, certain areas. And actually, when you get up into like Redena's and in, in that area, we do get narrower in there because the right-of-way gets narrower and you don't have Triangle Park to absorb that.
My, my other comment about forty-five and sixty, we used to be sixty downtown on Points. And when we went to forty-five, it got much easier and safer to back out into that lane of traffic. And when it was sixty, though, we, we did have a lane and a half for you to come into. But it was still, we had a lot of accidents with people backing up and not being able to fully see. Now, maybe we're all blessed with cameras now and that can help with the, the coming out, but, um, backing into this bike lane, uh, has been a concern of ours just in the design phase. Going to forty-five clearly makes it a safer movement for, for everybody.
And also, um, it seems like the landscaping is going to be dramatically, um, more than what we currently have. And so I'm trying to think, is there a way to reduce some of that to keep some of the parking spaces as well? It looks like it's coming into some of those areas. Maybe it is. I haven't been to Aggieville in a little while, so I don't remember exactly uh, what we have there as far as landscaping and don't, but I'm thinking all the new greenery is not something I'm used to seeing in Aggieville.
So I'm, I, again, I apologize for this not being up on the back screen. Um, the, the, the bulbous that we have at the alley where there's some additional archways and, and street trees, we're, we're more than likely gonna lose those stalls anyway because of the truck pattern and, and that movement. When we come back with the next reiteration, when, you know, possibly being out for, uh, a contract, we're gonna show that truck movement down Little Moro into that alley and that's gonna carve that corner off. These two stalls, uh, are, and, and the, the six that we have here, I think there's seven total today. So we lost one stall in that stretch. Uh, we lose four here, um, one because we went forty-five instead of sixty. So it takes more space, uh, to do that, but these two stalls, when we asked our engineers and our landscape architects, okay, if you're gonna put amenities, if you're gonna put streetscape and, and some landscaping in this area, where would you do it where it would be the safest? And they said these two stalls right now back out into the Little Moro area and they conflict with the North Manhattan. So you have to look down both streets when you're backing out of those two stalls. Um, and, and it's probably the most problematic to park in, uh, when you're backing out and dealing with those two lanes of traffic. So they put the amenity there. So Commissioner, if you were, if you're gonna gain two stalls back, it, it would be those two. And, and clearly people do it today. You drive right down Little Moro and it's, it's basically right into the one that you're, you're headed into. Probably a lot of people use it, but you do have two different paths of traffic that you, you better pay attention to on the way out.
Yeah. I guess what I'm like trying to look at when I think about something like Varsity Donuts or Redena's, those are quick stops for most people. Uh, you usually just get in, get your dozen donuts to take to work and you zip back out. Uh, so I'm trying to make sure, uh, how to, um, I mean, these are local businesses, regardless of where they will be in ten years. They're still our local businesses. So I would like to, uh, take that into consideration when we're looking at these spots where it's a quick in-and-out kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I think I'm gonna discuss that even more when we get into the garage, um, managing the fees and the rate costs. If they start at ten AM till eight PM and all of that, maybe that grace period until ten AM where they're not, where they're, I guess, not paying, I don't know, that they can, you know, park there quickly, go get whatever they need and come back out. Cause I would assume, uh, I don't wanna assume, most people eat donuts in the morning. I don't know. But, you know, the coffee they have all day long, so you, you just don't know. So I just wanna make sure we are taking care of that and paying attention to those, um, quick drops. So thirty minutes I would be very much in favor of for not charging regardless of time of day. I also wanna consider that if it's gonna end at eight PM, I have different concerns because you're, in my opinion, the biggest crowd comes out around ten, between ten and two is when everybody, that's when it's hustling and bustling down in Aggieville. And I wanna make sure we are also addressing that as, as the garage and fees move on in this discussion.
I, I appreciate that and we, we can look at some alternatives here. Little Moro will maintain itself by way of parking. Um, we make several trips to Varsity, so I can tell you all the places I parked to go into Varsity. So I, I will park, we'll park just about anywhere to get there. But I know it's important to them and I, I don't disagree with Mr. Pierce's comments in terms of, you know, if, if you can't just pull in right there, the odds of you pulling into the garage and walking into Varsity are, are probably pretty low. But that's me basing that off today's experience. That's the other thing with Redena's across the street. You know, we need some time for that garage to, to live and breathe for us to really have a good gauge. Now, there's, obviously, it takes away the stall right in front of their business. I get that. It's always gonna go, once it's away, it's away. You know, it's not like we're bringing it back if we see something different. Um, immediately anyway.
I just want them to be part of that conversation.
And they have been, and I, and I, I mean, we, we had the conversation. I know Wade shared with us exactly what he wrote to you all. He's concerned with those five stalls. I, and I know he is. And, and Varsity Donuts is concerned, even with this concept of losing, losing five total stalls in a two-block area or a block area. Uh, it, I, I get, I get what they're saying, but I also think we're making it safer and more attractive, not only for their business, but for the entire district.
Right, and we need to be clear about the thirty-minute free, free.
Oh, the management side?
Yes, and we need to be clear when we're telling our Aggieville businesses the other, um, available time slots and what they can do and keep this discussion in front of them. Cause they truly didn't know we were discussing it tonight, and maybe they did, but I don't know. But I think that's part of the conversation because they're our local businesses and this impacts them more than other businesses such as downtown. Downtown doesn't have to pay for a garage or fees or lose all of that. They have platforms because we invested in platforms for them, so they're willing to be okay with not having the parking spot. So I think there's a comparison constantly between Aggieville and downtown, uh, within their own business sector. Anyway, I will, uh, let you continue, but I wouldn't mind reducing some of that landscaping, streetscaping portion if we can gain a, a parking spot or two. Just, just a thought.
And, and you did say that they're, they're keeping the parallel parking on the north side of Triangle Park, Little Moro.
Yeah, for, for now, we're not even into that area with the redesign.
So with, yeah, if, if a little foresight, somebody can swing in, there's, there's what, eight or nine on the, on the south and four, five or six, four, five on this, on the north side, so, yeah, with, if you see an empty spot, take it quick and then, um, I think that's gonna be one of the, the, the solutions if we can, and if we can keep, keep the students from gobbling up those spots and running across campus to class, that should free up, especially in the mornings, there shouldn't be any reason that a lot of those spots aren't available, um, for customers of the area, so.
And we do spend a lot of time talking about parking management with our, with, with the, the businesses, you know. I think they recognize we're redoing the road. We wanna beautify it. They wanna create the streetscape and the, and the attractiveness of it. Parking stalls to any business are always going to be a high priority. We know that in, in both districts where we supply the parking. It's public streets, public parking, public sidewalks. We know how important it is. We also know it, it's the time. Now's the time. If you want more parking and less landscaping, we need to know that. It, it's time to build it and it's time to, to move forward. When we hit Moro, when we hit Twelfth Street, when we hit Laramie, it'll be the same conversation. There'll be a lot of, uh, opinions about what to do with parking in those areas, so. We never anticipated taking all this parking away. When we came into the design, it was always, all right, this is how much you have. Can you live with some less in order to get some of these amenities? I would say for the most part, the feedback has been... I would say for the most part, the feedback has been yes, but just don't take it all, don't take a huge number. And going from nineteen to fourteen, making it safer, moving the bike lanes, we felt like we were creating a concept here we could, we could all live with. But I'm certainly, oh, I'm never going to be surprised, somebody doesn't want more by way of parking.
Sorry, and their, and, but their property taxes was all, will also increase with all of this development, I would assume.
I would assume too. I think their property's gonna be a heck, worth a hef, heck of a lot more.
A lot more, so.
And, you know, if they're a tenant and they don't own the property, then, you know, that, that's a different circumstance than if they own the property.
Right.
And, and are able to, to leverage it. You know, the way Blumont has taken shape and your Commissioner, your comment earlier, that landscape is changing. It just is, the pressure for development's going to continue to mount. Now, we preserved Moro. We preserved it in our zoning regs and we preserved it in our plan. Those buildings, that feel does not change unless the planning board and the commission decide to change it. But the rules you put in place now, it does not change. Blumont and Laramie were envisioned to change and the zoning regs have been changed to allow it to change. So, that vision has played out not only in policy, but in practicality as well.
I think one of my biggest fears is we're going to outprice our local businesses and we will have regular box. I mean, as wonderful as Starbucks is, I don't wanna see a Starbucks all over the place as opposed to a Redena's and, and other coffee shops. So, that, that's, that's my, my fear is we're going to put them out of business and other, other box ones that are corporate everywhere else will plant themselves in that area. So, I just want us to be cautious when we do some of these.
And I can appreciate those comments too. We had very similar ones downtown. There are a lot of folks that felt like the north end and the south end were gonna destroy Points Avenue. Personally, I think the way we look at it today, it strengthened it. And our downtown is one of the stronger ones in the, in the state. Our occupancy is high, our locals are there predominantly on Points Avenue. I think our locals will be on Moro predominantly and that's, that's what we desire. That's exactly what we've set this thing up for. I don't think Northern Manhattan's a whole lot different. These buildings aren't changing. You know, they're not in that redevelopment area and it's not something we're looking to, to change dramatically.
I'd like to make sure that as you work with, as the construction progresses or begins, that you work closely with the merchants along that street so that they are not blindsided. And I don't, I mean, it's a small two-block area, it's not half a mile, so it ought to be doable to give them, whether you ask them to give you an email address so you can communicate with them or however you do it, just be sensitive to their needs. We're disrupting their world, how long do you expect construction to last?
We were aiming for, you know, July through February, March, so you're looking at six to eight months.
A whole academic year?
The, the businesses along Twelfth Street know how to get ahold of me, they know how to get ahold of Brian Johnson, they know how to get ahold of Law Construction and McCown Gordon Construction. We've had a lot of conversations and we're already starting to have a lot of conversations with businesses on Laramie. We do what we can to accommodate them. When your street is gone, it's going to impact your business.
Yeah.
And there's, there's no ifs, ands or buts about it, we, we dealt with it downtown.
I want us to make a deliberate effort to communicate with those businesses.
And, and.
When my, when my street was paved, pavers didn't communicate ahead of time with us. I'm just saying, there's a way to do business and, and involve people and have their goodwill and a way to blindside them so they come home at night and the street's torn. I, I'm just saying, I want us to be more sensitive to them. I don't wanna get complaints because we haven't been letting them know what the schedule is and when the road's gonna be, not even, can't travel on it at all. So, that's, that's just, that's my request is all.
And I would say your request is being fulfilled. It was on Twelfth and it is on Laramie today.
I don't know, I'm just.
And the fact that you're not getting complaints is one indicator that our, our contractor and our city staff are doing their jobs. And we have a good contractor.
Okay.
And John Patrick on McCown Gordon's staff is talking a lot. And Jake Hurston and Clinton Tricky on Twelfth Street talk to our businesses a lot. I, I would, yeah, they are doing a great job. It's why we wanna do the CMAR amendment, we wanna keep a good contractor down there, we want somebody who's gonna take the time to work with those businesses and talk with them about the impacts and the delays. It's a priority and it needs to be.
And then Jason, I'm sure you, you talked to Dennis at the Aggieville Business District and I mean, he's coordinating all that too. So, I think there's, you know, there, there's various ways that that happens. You're shaking your head, Commissioner Reddy, you don't believe that happens?
No, I believe they do, but the ones I sent to today didn't know we were talking about this. That's, that's my concern as far as feedback. They know we're doing something, but I think if we send out the agenda, I mean, I sent that, the agenda to Dennis even a couple of weeks ago when we, the RFP, I sent it out to him and a few other businesses. I think because he is the executive director, he probably does know what's going on, but some of the other businesses didn't know we were discussing it. And, and I can't assume that they're all aware of it, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree, but I'm just saying, you know, we've got all kinds of, you know, social media, the city puts out, you know, things on construction, the business district does and, and, you know, occasionally somebody doesn't get the word, but, you know, there's all kinds of stuff on social media, whatever. I find it amazing that somebody would be blindsided by this, but, and, but, but I agree, we need to just, you know, keep pushing it, get, get the word out as much as we can so that nobody is blindsided.
I agree.
So, is there anyone, you know, that, I know there's a few folks in the audience that wanted to speak on anything having to do with this plan on North Manhattan Avenue tonight? Looks like Dennis is gonna come up and say something.
Alright, thank you, I'm Dennis Cook with Aggieville Business Association. One of the questions I would have is, and I'm sure there's a plan for that, but while North Manhattan Avenue is under construction, how do we keep those businesses alive and, and make sure they're viable? And, and that is really now our only access onto Moro Street. And, you know, so I guess I would like to hear more about how we, how we keep that, that traffic flowing so that we don't hurt even another street while that one's going on. You know, we're in favor of, of, obviously of the redevelopment and it, you know, we've always been in favor of the vision, we just have to be careful about how we're doing it. So, those would be my questions for you right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Comment, go ahead.
Rex Fowles, twenty forty-eight Hunting Avenue. As a former business owner in Salina, totally agree with Commissioner Reddy that I'm concerned about the businesses down there, I'd like to see Manhattan do whatever they can to help them out and get through this. That said, Commissioner Haddasal mentioned ten years and I think it's gonna happen faster than, I think we do need to think ahead. As soon as they got self-driving cars, I'm not gonna be fighting for a parking spot. Some people like doing that, but I don't. My car's gonna drop me off right where I wanna go and it's gonna get lost. So, then we're gonna want more sidewalks, less streets, so I think we need to look at that too. So, just a lot of fun stuff here and that's gonna be a, a great popular destination. And so, I'm hoping if we can get them businesses through that, once this is done, they will thrive, just maybe five times as many people patronizing that area, so keep up the good work.
Good, good comments. Anyone else like to speak on this topic tonight?
Good evening, Colleen Lynn, twenty forty-eight Hunting Avenue. Commissioners, thanks for all of your work on this project. This is obviously a huge undertaking with a lot of competing concerns. I came down tonight because I'm a biker, I'm ecstatic about the bike lane and your commitment to it, but I'm really glad that I've paid more attention now to the Aggieville vision and I'm really ecstatic about the vision and what you're doing in Aggieville. I appreciate the concern over the parking, but the bulbous are beautiful and the sidewalks are consistent with a pedestrian-centric district. And I think that that's what will make this vibrant and will make it a destination for people of all ages and will bring their buying power with them. I love bringing my family and visitors to Aggieville and I'm going to love doing it even more, the more that we can stay consistent with this vision of making it a pedestrian-centric community center. So, thanks for that and I'm sure others will say things about how great the bike lane is, so I'll let them do that.
Chad Moro, four twenty-one Leavenworth Street. I wanted to make a comment in support of this plan, I think it is, it is terrific. This section we looked at tonight, I think the designers did a great job of balancing all the components of an active street. It's well-balanced, it's got good room for pedestrians, it's got room for cars to go and move and park safely and get out. And it also has a throughway bike lane that isn't all clustered up by the parking, big trucks on, on the side. And it's just a goofy arrangement that isn't natural for a cyclist coming through there and I think that will make a, a huge difference. This section is possibly, I think, the most biked part of Manhattan. I think on a regular day, it's a two-hundred cyclists go through there. And so, with these planned improvements, the protected bike lane on the north part of Manhattan, or North Manhattan Avenue going north of Aggieville and this going through into City Park, it really, really is gonna create a great north-south axis for cyclists to move through from the, our big development areas on the north campus corridor in, in Baff, moving into Aggieville, patronizing those places, moving down into City Park, enjoying that nice community amenity, reaching down farther south to go to the Lenninga Trail. And also, you could take a left on Point and go and enjoy our terrific downtown and with the outdoor seating is really great, I appreciate that, I've enjoyed that over the COVID period. Even some of my friends, we sat out there when it was nine degrees one time at Manhattan Brewing Company. I was the, we had four of us out there, I was the first one to go home cause my toes, I couldn't feel them anymore, but I really appreciate that. But this plan really is terrific, that, the key is that there's great balance in it. There's no one entity is being dominated by the other. There's balance for the pedestrian, the cyclist and the automobile and there's also consideration being taken for the businesses, which of course will benefit in the long run by more people being able to safely pass through and provide foot traffic for these businesses. Thank you.
Hello, RJ Youngblood, fourteen oh-five Pierre Street. I just wanted to indicate my support of the two-way bike lane specifically, but also this plan in general, like how wonderful would that be for Aggieville to be this beautiful destination place where people can come and spend significant time there, find outdoor seating, walk to different businesses and, and visit multiple things while they're there? I think right now, our approach to Aggieville is kind of a stop and go and how wonderful would it be to not only make it more safe and equitable, but a beautiful place to visit for the longevity of our community? So, super supportive of this plan, thank you.
Good evening, Brendan Cleaver, fourteen oh-five Pierre Street. I just wanted to first thank you all for reviewing this plan and considering it, looks wonderful and I think I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of this commission when thinking through the issues. But I just wanna signal my support for the two-way protected bike lane and the general renderings of this, this initial plan. You know, I think, I appreciate the concerns for the local businesses and I do think, I would see myself as a pro-business orientation for Aggieville. And the way the world works now is like we have to have design, we have to have walkable spaces, we have to have places that are appealing for people and this is what's gonna attract people to come to our community. And I think the tough thing is like the world is just getting more competitive, right? And so, when we look at other college towns and the amenities they have, this is, this vision is what we're competing with, so we have to be there. The second thing I just wanted to say was, we were here about a year ago for the Bike Ped Systems Plan, right? We approved that plan and this project was signaled as one of the most significant from an equity perspective because we have so many pedestrians and cyclists going through that intersection. It also represents a significant north-south connection to the larger system, right? So, if we don't do this now, we're gonna have a hard time connecting our equi, an equitable active transportation system. So, it's so important that we invest in this now. And, you know, I agree with Commissioner Esserbrook, there's not just what's happening above, it's beautiful, but it's also the, the not-so-fun stuff to think about, but that's essential for creating more concentration in that area, right? And that's gonna improve economic, economic activity, it's gonna improve social life, it's just something that we have to do. And I know sometimes change is hard and we have to think about, and then sometimes there's loss with that, right? But I think the, the plan will eventually be able to speak to that loss and it ultimately would be a good thing. So, I just wanna signal my support and appreciate your thoughtfulness, thank you.
Okay, that looks like everybody, I knew there was quite a group here that wanted to speak tonight, so I guess we can move on to talking about parking management, I guess, right?
We can. Andrew Vador is with us with Walker Consultants and Andrew, did you anticipate sharing your screen or did you want me to walk through the presentation?
Sure, I can share these slides, no problem.
If you wanna go ahead and share your screen, it should. I think the commissioners do have copies at their seats.
How's that, Jason?
Yep, that's great, go ahead, Andrew, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Jason, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, it's good to be with you again. Last time we were together, I was in chambers in the fall and we were reviewing parking manager plan strategies. This session is intended to be an update of the customer experience and how customers will experience parking in Aggieville in support of all of the growth and the great streetscape concepts that were just presented. We'll talk about the cost of managing the parking system in Aggieville, the parking rate analysis as well as a timeline implementation over the next twenty minutes. We understand the customer experience to be something of great interest, not only to the business owners in Aggieville, but also to the customers who'll be coming down. And in the scenario in which paid parking is implemented in Aggieville, there are a couple of different ways the customer can experience paying for parking. When I say experience, I mean the way they process their transaction. So, the idea of paid parking again is being considered from city staff in a way to support the ongoing maintenance and operational cost of a managed parking system as well as the ongoing maintenance and long-term costs for the new parking garage, remaining surface lots and on-street parking. The first is if we were to park as an hourly parker at the multi-space meters, which would be located on the streets around Aggieville, roughly one meter per street block. There's about twenty different meters that would be located in and around Aggieville on the street as well as in the parking garage conveniently located at those pedestrian access points. And then lastly, in the surface lots. Now, one of the things that we understand may be a desire for the business owners in Aggieville in whole is an initial free parking period. Now, there's not a right or wrong answer to whether you should or shouldn't implement and provide a free parking period, it's more about what the commission's desire is, what the residents' desire is and what the Aggieville business owner's desire is for that. In any circumstance, if free parking or an initial free parking period is desired, we would recommend that be managed in a small amount of time on street, thirty minutes is our suggestion. And the idea is we wanna be able to maintain turnover, more people coming in to grab that cup of coffee, to grab the donut, to pick up lunch, back skirt from one of the shops to send to some of their friends out of state. In any of these cases, that free parking period can be provided whether it's on-street or in the garage. So, the first way to pay for parking on-street or in the garage would be to walk up to any one of those meters. one of those meters, select your desired length of parking, whether it be 30 minutes for free, or four hours in the garage, or two hours on-street. You select that desired session, you enter your license plate number, you pay with your credit card, or if the desire is to pay with cash and coin, those can be included as well as options. At that point, you're free to walk away. You start your session and you move on to the purpose of your trip to Aggieville. Now, we talk about entering your license plate, and the purpose for doing so is to let that be your credential, so to speak, in order to tell the parking enforcement group that you have paid for parking, if it's above that initial free period, if you so choose to implement it, or if it is free, that you started a parking session at a particular time and plan to end it within that free period. A more convenient way for frequent parkers in Aggieville is to utilize a mobile platform. Now, there's several on the market, and the city could choose any one of them. The idea of consistency and having a consistent experience, whether you are in downtown, over by the convention center, at the airport, at the university, or in Aggieville, is important to the consumer. They don't really care, frankly, who owns the parking, who manages it, they just want to have a convenient experience. So K-State has elected to utilize the Park Mobile platform. The airport is currently rolling out and implementing and integrating Park Mobile with their new parking technology that they launched earlier this year. The steps are easy. You register for the app, you put your credit card information on file, you can load a balance in your wallet, and when you go to park, you will pull up the app, you'll select the zone that you're in. So one zone might be on-street parking, another might be in the garage, lots, they might have different rates. You'll select the duration of time that you wish to park for, whether it's that initial free period or an extended period. You'll pick the vehicle that you're driving today, maybe you have more than one vehicle, and you initiate your session, and you can walk away. You can initiate that paid parking session while you're walking down the street, or if you forgot, while you're waiting for that cup of coffee. So from a user perspective, it's quite easy. And if you do use the mobile platform, if you decide that you want to stay longer because you're having such a great time in Aggieville, you can extend your parking session right from your phone without having to get the bill from dinner and move on back to the car. Now, if you're not an hourly parker or a daily parker, and you are a business owner, an employee, or a resident that lives inside Aggieville, you can obtain a permit. Now, that permit process is very similar to the permit process that you might have today in the residential neighborhoods north of Bluemont, for example. You would need to register with the city and the parking group, and you would again use your license plate as your permit. So there's no need to have a hangtag, there's no need to have a sticker affixed to your window, that license plate is used for your permit. And we'll talk about why we use our license plate here in a minute. Currently, as we show here on the right, these are the current parking regulations that were adopted last fall and implemented earlier this year. Those restrictions will roll and change once the garage is open. Again, our target date for all of these policies and principles of parking management is always focused around the opening of the garage, which is why we have had a transitional approach and continue to recommend teaching and education and moving to that long-term plan. And then lastly, the streetscape, as it moves from block to block to block, make change what parking is managed and what parking is not managed during those construction phases. So managed parking, as we've talked in the past, comes at a cost. There's capital costs, and some of those capital costs are those meters to install on the street in cooperation with streetscape projects, also that can be installed before, and then in final streetscape design, the integration of those meters will be considered, so they look like they belong there. Those meters cost about $10,000 apiece and have ongoing connectivity fees. Those ongoing connectivity fees are basically cellphone plans, so they can communicate. We recommend using cellular connection rather than having to provide additional infrastructure, which can at a much higher cost as part of the streetscape project. The way that we enforce parking and manage compliance with not only the free period, but the paid period is through license plate recognition enforcement. You may have seen this in other communities you've visited or at K-State, they're beginning to roll this program out as well. Basically, it's cameras affixed to a vehicle, and that camera reads the license plate, it looks into the system and tells you whether or not that that license plate, or we talked about your credential when you paid a park, is valid and active or not. There's a lot of different ways that you can install that. The top picture shows a little three-wheel buggy. This is an example from Aspen, Colorado, and you might say, well, what does Aspen have to do with Kansas? And I submit to you that it snows in Aspen, and it definitely is cold in Aspen like it is in Manhattan in the winter. And this little vehicle's pretty rugged, it's three-wheel drive, and so it's able to navigate around and through the streets very easily. Sometimes you see them affixed to Jeeps or other small sport utility vehicles. This system comes at a cost of about $60,000, and you still have to buy a vehicle that has ongoing connectivity fees. So this initial capital outlay comes at a cost of about $340,000, and that's a one-time capital outlay, with the exception of those ongoing costs. Now, we start to layer on enforcement and personnel costs, and that comes in two forms. One is an administrator of the parking program, which is a full-time job to manage a system like Aggieville. And the second is the enforcement personnel, or as we prefer to call them, parking ambassadors, to manage compliance with the policies laid out within Aggieville or across the city. The cost ranges we've shown here are in line with what the city would pay these type of personnel. This ongoing annual personnel cost is about $161,000 annually. So here in the orange, you show that parking technology cost, we layer on the personnel cost to manage the system, and then lastly, we have operation and maintenance, which is shown here on the right-hand column. That includes maintaining the parking facility, keeping the parking garage clean, and taking care of the ongoing maintenance and operation cost, so it has that useful service life that it's currently designed for. It also includes the cost of maintaining the streets where the parking is and the parking lots within Aggieville. So all in, it's about $380,000, $382,000 on an annual basis. Now, that cost of managing the parking within Aggieville is important, and managing parking, as we've talked about for many months and years now, is critically important to the vibrancy of Aggieville, as well as the sustainability of the businesses and the beautification and growth within the Aggieville redevelopment plan. So we start to look at, well, how can we pay for that operation? How can we cover the costs to maintain the parking garage, to maintain the streetscape improvements, to maintain a good parking management plan? Well, one option, as we've discussed in the past, is out of the general fund and let all the users and the citizens within Manhattan pay for those improvements, pay for the management of the very specific activities happening in Aggieville. And during this discussion of the airport and whether or not to implement paid parking at the airport, the same conversation came up. And at the time, commission elected to provide a user fee and pass those costs on to the users of the services. Now, the users of the services are the visitors to Aggieville, the business owners, the people that go to Aggieville to experience what Aggieville has to offer. So we looked at three different scenarios. Here, we'll look at the scenarios on the left-hand side first, then I'll talk about the bar chart on the right. One scenario we looked at is some peer communities. And those peer communities are communities that the city has looked to in the past as examples, maybe cities that you look up to, also cities that have similar-sized areas of Aggieville that are adjacent to a university. And so the rates there on the top right part of that table are the aggregated average rates for those communities. We also consider the parking rates that are currently being charged at K-State, because they are directly adjacent to you and absolutely affect consumer choice from the university and whether or not they use Aggieville as a parking resource. The second is a cost recovery scenario. That's the second row on the table here. And this cost recovery scenario is what would we have to charge if we wanted to break even on those ongoing costs? So the $380,000 a year cost to operate, manage, and maintain the parking system in Aggieville. You'll see that those costs are lower than the peer communities that we benchmarked. And then lastly, we have the recommended rate scenarios. Now, the recommended rate scenarios are different from the cost recovery scenarios for a couple of different reasons. The first is that we need to consider the fact that K-State, your neighbor, has paid parking, and if the parking is priced out of line and lower than that at the university, there is a wonderful opportunity for university staff, faculty, and students to use the parking in Aggieville rather than the parking at the university. Now, that negatively affects Aggieville, because if the university is using the parking in Aggieville, we have less parking in Aggieville to accommodate our guests, our business owners, our employees, as well as those few spaces that might be lost as part of the streetscape. And that parking garage and that capacity at that parking garage is going to adequately cover the demand in parking in Aggieville. So I want to point out a couple of different things here with the rates, and then we'll go to the bar chart. In the recommended rate scenario, the last two lines of $35 a month for a permit and $20 a month for qualified permits is a distinguishing thing that I want to bring to your attention. We recognize that you have part-time employees in Aggieville that would not spend five days a week, eight hours a day or more, working in Aggieville. And as such, we suggest as an option for you to consider providing a part-time employee permit program, which is at a reduced rate from that of the monthly permit for a business owner or resident in Aggieville that would have your car parked well over 40 hours a week. You'll also notice that the monthly permit fee is higher than in the cost recovery scenario, and that is because we need to set that monthly permit rate in line with K-State's parking rates, so we don't turn the Aggieville parking garage or parking lots into K-State parking. Again, we want to be friendly to our K-State neighbors, but we don't want to use municipal resources to do that. The other thing I want to show you is that we have modeled and considered, in the recommended rate scenario, that there may be a potential for a 30-minute free parking period, not only in the surface lots, the garage, but also on-street, so across the entire parking district. Now, if you want to have a higher park, a higher free time period off-street, that's fine, but the, again, the intent is we want to limit the amount of free parking on-street so we can maintain that turnover for guests coming into Aggieville that have quick stops, quick stays, and they're picking something up. We're also suggesting that two-hour time limit on-street at a dollar an hour. And again, if you're there for more than two hours, there is adequate and ample parking in the garage, which by the way, if you stayed all day, would cost you less than two hours on-street. So I want to draw your attention now to the bar charts, and I'll walk you through this here. The yellow line is the line that represents the annual cost of maintaining the parking system. That's the staff, that's the capital sinking fund, the maintenance and repair of the garage, lots, and what have you. In the peer rate bar, which is the blue bar, you'll see that that bar extends well above that yellow line. That bar above the yellow line represents additional revenue that could be generated if you use those parking rates of your peer communities, in the order of magnitude of about $800,000 annually. That's a lot of money. I also want to draw your attention to the cost recovery rate scenario, which is the orange bar on the right. But basically, you operate the system to break even, but you have some incongruous situations where your parking rates might be misaligned with your neighbors. So a recommended rate cost scenario is that gray bar there. Again, you'll see the area above the yellow line as additional revenue. It's not a lot of money, you know, it could be in the neighborhood of around $400,000 a year. That's going to fluctuate, you know, these are preliminary evaluation numbers from old parking data that was collected well before the garage was completed, and also well before the Aggieville redevelopment plan was completed. The key is, in this situation, with that recommended rate scenario, that there's additional monies that can be used at the discretion of commission to help pay for other projects potentially in the community, in Aggieville, to help pay for other parking, mobility considerations that might be needed within the Aggieville district. So I did want to point out that that's the situation that's available there. Again, these numbers can be fine-tuned. You do get to a floor, though, where, you know, if you're charging 25 cents per hour, you're way out of market, and you're way out of market anywhere in the United States at charges for parking. And if you want to start looking at rate that low, you might want to just consider not having paid parking, because the cost to manage it would be too high. So I want to talk about the timeline of implementation, and I want to again remind you that this timeline implementation looks towards 2022, when the parking garage opens. So we're basically working backwards. I do want to recognize that in the fall of last year, the parking regulations for this summer were updated and implemented in the code ordinances. So congratulations for that happening. And that's a result of, you know, this ongoing communication and discussion about good parking management policies and practices. You have a good parking management plan that you're working from now, and now that we have that plan, if we work that plan, we can continue to move forward with that transitional approach. I also want to mention that kind of the next steps look towards, in a timeline phase, making sure that over the summer, the city can onboard and train parking staff about the new parking policies, start actively manage those parking time limits within Aggieville, and get the parking organization set up. We also need to start looking towards procuring the equipment. That's that capital equipment we talked about, the parking meters and the parking enforcement equipment. We recommend that you begin that process this summer, and that'll take you through the winter of 2021, fall of 2021, and the end of the beginning of 2022, before we can secure the contracts, bring it back to commission for final approval, and then have the vendor that is selected begin manufacturing that equipment so it can be installed in the summer and fall of 2022. We also need to continue this discussion and finalize parking rates, if commission elects to implement them as the way to pay for the ongoing managed parking. That finalization of parking rates needs to occur in the spring and the summer of 2022 in order to get the ordinances in place and in order to get the parking technology programmed in preparation for the parking garage opening. And then lastly, is the piece about community engagement, community outreach, the training on these new parking technologies and the purpose behind them. on these new parking technologies and the purpose behind them, so the community understands its purpose, the why and the how to do it. And we want to do that as we start putting that equipment out on the streets so they can touch and feel it, begin using it, and become familiar with it. And then lastly, when paid parking is implemented around the time the garage is open, we want to begin enforcement with education. We don't want to immediately start handing out tickets and putting them on everyone's windshield. We want to teach through education, and we find that that process is much more effective and successful in communities around the country and those like yours with that process of forgiveness through education. So lastly, we have a couple of key steps that we have identified with staff over the next six months. Again, that's hire and train the parking staff and getting that parking organization or department formalized. We recommend beginning the procurement process of that parking technology so it can be ready for implementation when the garage opens in 2022. And then again, we want to continue the discussion about parking rates and the purpose behind them with you and with the community. So that's what I wanted to share on our update. I'm happy to answer questions and provide any discussion that commission has.
Commissioner Haddasol, is it Andrew? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have an opinion about, there's a difference between the first half hour is free and a free first half hour. For example, either you can, if you stay for an hour and a half, you get charged for an hour and a half, or you just get charged for the hour after the first half hour that was free. What's your opinion on those two different situations?
So again, Commissioner, there's not a right or wrong answer to this. It's really about what's right for your community and what's right for the business owners to be comfortable with in Aggieville. We believe, though, in our opinion, in my years of experience working with the city and spending, you know, many days in the city at various times a year, that that first period of free time, whether it's 30 minutes or maybe it's 60 minutes in the garage, whatever you land on, should be upfront. And the purpose of that being upfront is so if somebody wants to run in and grab a cup of coffee, they don't have to be burdened by having an additional expense or just a few short minutes of running in and getting that in a Danish or grabbing a donut in the morning, or heck, in the afternoon, buying a t-shirt, as I mentioned earlier. So having that first time block free is the preferred strategy, and then after that time period, you begin that paid parking period. Now, in any case, we need the parker to register that they are there and their vehicle is physically present, because otherwise, when parking ambassadors come by to verify and check that I, for example, am paid, well, if I'm in there for that free period of time, whatever that duration is, Commissioner, they need to know that I'm in that grace period or that free period. Otherwise, they very well may think that I'm just trying to get free parking and escape the system and not comply with the ordinances.
So most of the scenarios that you pointed out here was the first half hour is free for everybody. Is that right, then?
It is correct, yes.
Okay. Well, I was going to say, I was, when I was down in Florida back in January, I was using the Park Mobile, whatever it was, app, and it was very simple to use. Once you put your credit card number in and your license plate in, and off you go, it would send me a text when I was down to 10 or 15 minutes left so that I could either hustle back to my car or get, or extend my session. So I, I think that was, that's going to be a great system and a great app, very simple. And since everybody's got a phone, it ought to be a very easy way to go. Plus, if you've got all the kiosks, obviously for the people that are lower tech, that would still be a good option. So, yeah, I think, I think a right on, I, I would like us to think that we could generate some profit over time to provide other amenities, whether it's more, more improved parking options or help pay down the parking garage or something. But it's assuming most of the time, expert projections on costs and income for most of our projects have been, even though while they said they were conservative, they're still tended to be low most of the time. So, yeah, I would think the gray recommended one would give us some margin for error to where you wouldn't have to worry about losing money for very long. Which brings me to my next question for city staff. Where do we figure we'd front the money for the equipment stuff to start with? Are we going to raid the water fund or something again for that, or do we have a, a plan to...
So more than likely, it would roll into the overall funding of the project, which we're debt financing.
Okay, so borrow the money upfront, pay for it, and then just use the proceeds to pay down the bonds as part of that.
Keep in mind, we've got three and a half years of temp notes on that, too, so we don't have to start paying that back right away. We'll have a couple of years of revenue flowing in that might help with some of that.
You're not interested in trying to earmark any profits right away with just, anything just goes to help pay the whole thing down faster and better is kind of the scenario you're thinking?
There could be some options for looking at trying to buy down some of that if we have some funds available.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I agree with what Commissioner Haddasol has said. I like the, you know, that gray bar seems to give us some profit, and I think we've already fenced a little parking fund where that money could go in there and then you could, you know, put it wherever you, you need it later. And I also think, you know, one of the key points that was made was the parking plan has really got to dovetail with what KSU does, because I think one of the things we just haven't fully been able to put our finger on is how much of the parking problem in Aggieville is being driven by students, you know, using it to avoid paying parking fees on KSU. And so I think, I think that, that's just vital in the way this is laid out. I think it, you know, it's not going to reward anybody for parking in Aggieville and going to class, and that's what we want, that's what we want. We want that to be separate. You know, if you're going to K-State and use their parking to go to class, if you're going to Aggieville, then use the parking that we have there. And I think the 30-minute, you know, limit, you know, of free time is, is going to take care of that problem where a lot of the businesses are worried about, you know, people being able to, you know, to, to go in and get out without, without having, without having to pay. So, so I think it, I think it's laid out real well. I'm sure that, you know, we may end up having some other exceptions, like maybe, you know, some of those stalls in front of some of those stores where they want high turnover, you know, may, maybe set up so that, you know, you can't park there, you know, for two hours in, in either case, no matter how you do it. So I, I think it's looking, looking, looking pretty good, and I think those rates are quite reasonable. So Commissioners, go ahead.
Commissioner Morris, I wondered, well, I am, I think I'm supportive of using the recommendations you have for the, what to charge, especially that monthly $30 rate, I think makes a difference. And I was a little taken aback. I thought the parking garage would, would, would have over 400 or 450 spaces, but on page 12 here, it talks about 328, oh, okay, on-street spaces and 586 off-street. So that would be a total of, how many for this parking garage? 400 and something?
450.
450, okay. And so the budget is built on those 450?
Andrew's highlighting all the potential parking spots in the district, whether you're on the street, you're in a surface parking lot, or in the parking garage.
Yeah. Well, that's fine, but I want to be sure that the airport parking lot, the money that's collected there, that we have, we know exactly where we are in paying for that, and the same with this parking garage. I want to be able to know where we stand financially and not just all, I mean, I'm sure as a big budget, you have to have that kind of interaction between the accounts, but ultimately, I don't, I really don't want the answer to be, I'm sorry, we can't tell you that because we don't keep track of it. I think that's going to be, both the construction and this operational plan, these are expensive things, and we need to be accountable for them. So I'm interested in making sure that happens, too. And so the operational plan is for 2.8 new positions, it sounds like, that we can cover with this?
It is, yes, Commissioner, and that is a combination of parking enforcement officers, or again, as we prefer to call them ambassadors, because we believe they can have a much higher role than making sure that you pay for your parking in Aggieville. And it also accounts for one FTE for managing the parking program in whole. And I should clarify to your previous comment that any consideration of the parking management plan in Aggieville has no bearing on the P and L for any parking revenues or expenses that might come from the airport. So we have considered those as completely separate from each other and do not have much bearing in terms of the policy and the recommendation for pricing that we have suggested here for this area within the city. It also excludes the parking resources along Points Avenue in the downtown area and any other public parking resources, such as the convention center garage. So this focuses solely on Aggieville.
The only additional comment I would make, Commissioners, we have had a conversation with K-State about parking management. They desire to go to license plate recognition at some point. The insights and the feedback we got from their management team over parking was very valuable for city staff. We reached out to talk to them about this garage and potentially a partnership. We want to continue to explore that. If we could hypothetically, just an example, contract with them to oversee the parking management in Aggieville, they obviously have resources. They are managing a very wide range of parking scenarios on campus. If they were to get into the license plate recognition software, as well as what we're trying to identify here, there might be an opportunity to partner, and we want to keep that door open. Clearly, when we met with them, COVID was going on, and they were a little nervous about students coming back to campus at some point. They're, they're obviously losing revenue right now, and they're somewhat of a self-sustaining group. So we'd like to reengage with them. If predictions hold fast and students are back in session in the fall, then we'd really like to re-approach and have conversations with them about that option. That may push this out a little bit. It may alter some of the estimates and some of the projections that Andrew has provided, but we want to maintain an open dialogue with K-State and see if we can't work something out.
I would appreciate, I mean, I, I think I could support you working with K-State, but on page 18, it talks about another, if we were to subcontract out the operation, and I wouldn't be interested in, I was going to object to that. I think I could understand working with K-State, but, so you don't have anything, even though we've been talking about the airport and this, and the Aggieville garage and K-State all being in the same system, even though they aren't necessarily linked, that isn't worked out. Is that what you're saying?
The relationship that we're talking about is actual boots-on-the-ground enforcement. The systems at the airport are, are different than they are at K-State, and they're different than they will be in Aggieville. The technology is similar, but you have gates and arms at Aggie, in the airport. People get a ticket at the airport. Aggieville, you won't get a ticket. At Aggieville, you get on your phone, you'll register your vehicle, or you'll go to a kiosk.
Is it the same technology company?
To be determined about Aggieville, whether or not it'll be, the systems will be similar, but again, you have different components. You're using gates versus license plate recognition.
I don't care about the gates versus, I mean, I'm just talking about the overall development of it and how it works together, and we don't have three different systems that we have to keep, our staff has to keep track of. I thought it was going to be an integrated system.
It's the same app, but that's the only thing that's similar.
It is, and Andrew can expand upon it, but the, the technology, the, the backbone of this from a technical standpoint, I believe is similar that the airport has that we will have. I don't think it's similar to what K-State has. The Park Mobile app is the consistent feature, but as far as the backbone from an IT perspective, we're trying to integrate what we have at the airport with Aggieville, similar components.
Yeah, the way I see the difference, to me, it's like, it's like, you know, some of us use, we go paperless, and some want paper. At the airport, you're going to get a ticket, it's going to have paper, but that's because you're flying and the, and the, and the timeframe. And then in Aggieville, it's essentially going to be paperless. It'll be really user-friendly for people to have cell phones, and those that don't will have to go up to kiosk, and they can still punch the stuff in, and it will still be paperless. But, but as far as the IT stuff, it should be pretty smooth, just, just like it is with a computer. You can print it or not. You can save it to the desktop, or you can print it.
That's not what I'm hearing.
Well, I could try to add this for clarity. The system that is consistent across the board is the ability for the parker to use the Park Mobile app. So again, we're, we're thinking and talking about frequent parkers, people that will go to the airport, will go to K-State, will go to Aggieville. They can use one application on their phone to access and pay for parking, whether there is a gate or not a gate, that same platform can be used across kind of the system and the network. Now, what is different, though, from a technology perspective, Commissioner, is that the airport is gated and Aggieville will not be gated. Now, Aggieville not being gated is really focusing on a very different user group and a very different experience for people in Aggieville, let's say the airport or K-State. And having unrestricted access and free flow in and out of the garage is absolutely a matter of convenience and a great experience for the customer to not have to wait behind somebody that's having trouble paying for parking when some sort of event or activity in Aggieville lets out and everybody leaves at one time. From a IT infrastructure perspective, there's not any infrastructure or IT infrastructure required in, in Aggieville, and that was intentional in discussions with city staff and the other streetscape design teams to minimize some of those upfront capital costs and to allow for flexibility in the future as technology changes, such that we didn't have to lay conduit and wire and power and communication for some of the infrastructure. So the IT backbone is a little bit different, but it's in an attempt to be flexible and save cost in Aggieville specifically. I hope that helps put some framework around the question.
I have, Jason, this is Commissioner Ready. I have a few questions. I, and I read the papers and all of this, too. So I think with the recommended rates scenario, I need a little bit more information about, it says $1 per hour, two, two-hour limit, and then it says 50 cents per hour, $2 per day. What, what does that mean? Is it two different scenarios in the recommended scenario? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, if I can jump in here, the $1 per hour is specifically saying on-street parking spaces, whereas the 50 cents per hour, the lower rate, is for off-street. That would be in the surface lots.
Oh, off-street, okay. So 50 cent is off-street, and the dollar is the garage?
The dollar is on-street.
On-street.
50 cents is off-street. So that would be the garage and the surface lots.
Okay.
Essentially, they're, they're, it's an example that Andrew has, has brought to our attention many times in terms of, if you're able to park right in front of kites, because that's where you want to be to eat and to, to socialize, there's going to be a premium there's going to be a premium for that.
Right.
And if you're going to be there more than two hours, the system is going to suggest you really should be in the garage, if you're going to be there that long. Now, if you're going to stay, you can put a limit there to where if they're past two hours at a site that is a premium, then they'll get a ticket. They'll get an additional charge. Again, it's an encouragement for you, if you're going to spend more than two hours in any, in any given site, to park in the garage at a cheaper rate, but stay longer.
Then what is the two dollars per day? Tell me an example where that would occur in Aggieville. Is it the garage, two dollars a day?
So that example is, I am coming down to visit Aggieville to have breakfast. I'm going to meet some friends and we're going to walk around and shop, and then we're going to have lunch, and then we might shop a bit more in the afternoon. So in that period, that would be your maximum daily rate. So if you stayed more than two hours on-street, it would be in your interest to park in the garage for a much lower rate. So that's the maximum daily rate, Commissioner.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. My next question is the thirty-five dollars per month and the twenty dollars per month qualified. You may have explained it, but I don't remember what you said. What does qualified mean?
Sure, that's a good question. We understand that there are a couple of different types of long-term parkers in Aggieville. It's business owners and employees that park there all day long. And there's also a different subset of employees in Aggieville that are part-time employees and don't maybe work five days a week, eight hours a day. And in that situation, those employees are likely not making the same amount of money as a full-time employee. Now, that might be Commissioner, because they're students or their hours of operation for that business don't require you're a full-time job. And so in that case, we're identifying as an opportunity, again, to be discussed amongst Commission and receive input from the Aggieville Business Association and business owners in Aggieville, if that's something of interest, to have a reduced rate permit. And those reduced rate permits would be qualified to staff and employees that are qualified part-time employees. So meaning they work up to a certain number of hours a week, and as such, because they're not utilizing that parking asset all day, every day, you could charge them a lower rate because they're just using the asset for less.
Okay, I think the problem I have, thinking, the problem is, if you're a part-time worker, you'd be paying about two hundred forty dollars a year. And if you're full-time and you're paying thirty-five dollars a month, that's about four hundred twenty a year. So that's, if you, I mean, that's quite substantial. If you pay twenty, twenty, twenty each month, it doesn't seem so much. But I think that's, twenty dollars is, is quite a bit for a student, so I don't know how that would work. Does the employer have, I guess they have an option if the employer wants to purchase that for their employee? When they do the interview, interviewing process, I'm sure the employee would ask, do I have to pay for my own permit? Or do you take care of it? So that's an extra burden, depending on how many employees you have. So I don't know if that discussion was already had at Aggieville. What, I don't, did that discussion take place? I don't know if Dennis or you, if somebody can answer that?
No, we haven't had a whole lot of discussion on, on the rates. This is obviously the first time we've really jumped into it too deep. You know, we're talking about a strategy for, a, a, as was mentioned earlier, about eight hundred different stalls in Aggieville. We have, we have yet to really address the perimeter around Aggieville. I mean, right now, we're addressing it in terms of limiting it to people who live there or to certain hours, you know, throughout the day, but twenty dollars per month, and that's, that's getting into obviously cents per hour for folks to, to park in Aggieville. And that's consistent with what we've seen in other districts that have garages, as they offer those to employees. And they're, they're heavily utilized in those districts as well. It's, it's covered, it's, it's safe, it's an area where they can leave their vehicle and feel comfortable and not have to pay a whole lot.
Well, it makes sense to us because we're not paying it, but if my son or daughter had to pay that each month, I don't know if they would just go somewhere else, I would think. But I think that's a discussion that needs to be had with the business district as well, because this is the only business district where they're going to have to pay for that. Downtown, you know, that Convention Center, they don't have to pay anything. So we have one area in town that'll have a garage where employees or business owners, if they choose to put their car in this garage, have to pay four hundred twenty dollars a year or two hundred forty a year. I understand what it means coming down to cents per day, but that's not how it's going to be received or sold. So I think that's something to have a discussion with, you know, within Aggieville. And also, why aren't we doing this to the other garage? Are we looking at having a payment system in the other garage too?
Absolutely.
Because I think it needs to be consistent.
I don't think we'd have to buy any more vehicles or man, or hire any more people.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the next thing, because that's been free for years. And I think if we're going to do it, let's just be consistent across the board. We did want to take care of the garage and have it pay for itself, kind of like we did at the airport. So this, the recommended rate scenario looks like the most doable to meet the needs of our community as well as Aggieville and the reason we're putting up the garage. I do have questions about, I don't know what decisions we have to make tonight, but I also have questions about the hours that it's open, and I, I spoke to you earlier on the phone about that, starting at ten AM till eight PM, and you said we might have to hire other people or more staff or whatever it might be if we wanted to go later. What I don't want to do is give that, that, that crowd that comes in the evening as, you know, walkable and bikeable that area is. There's still going to be cars in the garage, and I want to make sure that the retail business that's happening in the daytime has to pay for it, but in the evening, those customers don't have to pay for it. I, is that my understanding?
We have yet to really set those timeframes, and the governing body will provide that direction at some point and tell us when they want to police it and when they don't.
So you don't need that information now?
Not right now.
Okay, so you need to know what?
From a parking management standpoint, I think where Andrew landed here by way of a recommended strategy, if there's concurrence with that, he laid out some steps that we'll take next, which, when you look at twenty-one, we're obviously right in, in the cusp of spring. We'll want to start looking at Parking Systems Manager and Onboarding and Trading for that individual. If, if we decide to delay that, we can obviously delay it. We can move it out till the fall. If we want to see, i, if we're interested in working with K-State on parking management, we can hold off on that. I do think by the summer, we need to start looking at kiosks, license plate recognition, RFPs and procurement. Because even if we did strike a deal with K-State or some sort of third party, we'd, we'd probably be likely to buy that equipment and buy that vehicle regardless. I'm, I'm, you know, the relationship with K-State is one in which we're just after an efficiency. We're just after a contract relationship where we're not hiring more people and more expenditures are absorbed into the city's budget. If we can contract for that type of service, possibly, you know, that expertise just comes in and helps us. If it doesn't make sense and we hire the two point eight, we hire the two point eight.
Just a sec, I was looking at that timeline there. I thought you said earlier that the parking garage should be done by February of twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, and you can see in his timeline, our, uh,
Yeah, he's showing it as.
K-State parking is more in the fall, so he's got us really ramping up and getting ready to start charging in the fall of twenty-two.
Okay, so there may be, there'd be a period of time where there's no charges.
Yeah, and I think Andrew, you can comment here, but when we talk privately, there, it's, it's not a bad thing to have a grace period where, you know, you're, you're trying to work in the system, people getting used to the facility, used to the area, and then roll in your, your enforcement.
Correct, and I, I can't overstress the importance of that break-in period and that education period. One of the comments made earlier tonight was, I didn't like to see the truck driving down my street. I didn't know it. All right, so we don't want that situation to happen with the business owners, with the guests and customers coming into Aggieville. We want to have kind of that soft break-in period that lets people get used to the new system. It gives them an opportunity to, you know, play with the, with the mobile app, to try out that thirty minutes of free parking and see how easy it is. It lets those parking ambassadors and parking enforcement officers get out there on the street and share that information with people. And then secondarily, you know, we don't want people to be learning that this new technology's out there and they have to pay for parking by getting a parking ticket, right? There are some things other communities have done in which they slap down what appears to be a ticket on their windshield, but it's really information about the new parking system and how you can use it, how you can download the app. So that's kind of that soft launch period over the few months in advance of the garage opening and that official go-live date. And those are not necessarily hard dates, right? There's flexibility in that, in the timeline. But in order to meet the general premise of, we want to have all of this system ready when the garage opens, we need to start that process now to be prepared for.
I would just highlight as well, even if we were open the garage in March, summertime is always a really good time for us to think about changes when it, when it comes to students. So when they do get back in the fall, we're rolling out something that is fairly consistent for a solid three, four-month period. So I think his timeline works well in that regard as well.
Just from my perspective, the, the recommended rates makes sense. And I think for the sake of clarity, when we talk about, I think we use, and I confuse myself, I guess, in that we want this to pay, we want the garage to pay for itself is really not what we're talking about. We're talking about recovering the cost to manage the parking because the garage is being funded totally separately, and we're not going to recover that fourteen million from parking meters. That's my understanding, I think, and we, we sometimes, I think, the public may hear that we're charging parking fees because we have a parking garage and, and make that connection, connect those dots. And I, I don't necessarily think those dots are connected in the, in the same sense as it might come across. But on the recommended rates, that twenty dollars a month, I, that's a, I, I mean, the businesses, right, the employees, that's the only thing that I think, I hope that the Aggieville Business Association and the businesses down there are able to, to work through and negotiate as this gets farther along. I'm sure there's some, like, the Italian restaurant, there's different restaurants that have lots of staff that come and go, and I would, I would imagine there's the, an ability to purchase multiple passes as an entity and then have those match up with the license plate when that employee's kind of hired. And that way, there's some control over that at a reduced rate, so you're not, you're not really, hopefully not causing an increased burden for employees. But it would be potentially an additional benefit for working in Aggieville too, if you looked at it that way, if your employer provided parking. But that's it. It looks good to me.
Okay, do you need any other information? Sounds like everybody's pretty much in line, a couple of tweaks on, on, on some specifics. But as far as the recommended rates and the general way that we're headed, we seem to all be on board, I think.
Yeah, I think it was really good feedback this evening. I know we took two and a half hours this evening, but I, I do appreciate the comments and the feedback. We do take project management seriously, and we want to represent the city as we engage with the businesses and the district. I'll talk to Dennis and see what else we can do. I know downtown, we had a lot of other opportunities as we're coming out of the COVID era. I think there'll be more opportunity for us to meet with some folks and, and we'll get larger groups together, so we'll continue to explore that as well and get some feedback and, and input from the, the businesses.
Jason, one, one last comment. If we do this in Aggieville, can we just simultaneously do it in, in the downtown garage also? Or is that not up, I think we should just do it since it's like infrastructure. If you're doing it in one, why not just do the other at the same time?
I, I, I agree with you Commissioner. It's something that we'll start talking with the, the five owner managers down there that we've talked to before about changing the rates and structure. PD has made it very clear to us, if we don't start charging in that garage, there, the behavior that is occurring there is only going to get worse. We have a hard time with a, a, a number of different issues in that garage. We'll be coming back to you very soon with a lighting project. You've given us the blessing to move forward with that. We'll bring that contract back soon, getting accounts started on that. That'll be consistent with the lighting in the Aggieville garage. My understanding from recent use, it's pretty dark in that facility at night, and it, it needs some attention immediately, but it's definitely a conversation we can start. We anticipated that. Andrew and I have talked about that garage downtown, having this license plate recognition as well. And given the, the proximity and the frequency at which you go through a district with the equipment that he's suggesting, we felt like we could cover downtown as well. Not only the garage, but you could actually use license plate recognition in the district as well. And, and when you enter that district, you could have a different set of parameters by which you're operating as well.
Talking about the, the downtown garage, yeah, after the, the chamber event, yeah, we parked on the second floor and it looked like there's plenty of lights, just all the light bulbs, a lot of the light bulbs were burnt out. So I'm not sure how much of a solution will be if we could get some people over there with a bunch of light bulbs and that would, that would be a start with the darkness. It doesn't solve the, the crime and the nuisance issues, but.
Yeah, you, you're right. We got plenty of fixtures. They're just not working correctly. It's beyond the bulb. So we've got some issues that we're going to address with that.
Okay, great discussion tonight. Thank you. If you tuned in, out, using the media or the Cox Cable Channel. And thank you. We're adjourned for the night.